East Dundee's committee of the whole meeting dated Monday, March 18th, 2024. We have 6:02. Catherine, would you take the role, please?
Trustee Mahoney.
Here.
Trustee Coonsy.
President.
Trustee Britton.
Here.
Trustee Saviano.
Here.
Trustee Soder.
Here.
President Lyman.
Here.
And trustee Tribbers on the phone waiting for a motion to.
I'll make a motion to allow him to participate, to participate via teleconference because of a work conflict.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Coonsy.
Yes.
Trustee Britton.
Yes.
Trustee Saviano.
Yes.
Trustee Soder.
Yes.
And President Lyman.
Yes. Okay, that's going to take us right into our agenda items. And the first one is the Flock Automatic License Plate Recognition Discussion. So Chief Fordes, I believe this is one's yours, so the floor is yours.
Thank you, President. I actually brought Representative Dan Murdock from Flock with me, so I'm going to, if you don't mind, I'm going to have him come up. He's going to be able to explain this a lot better than I can.
Sure.
And answer any questions you might want.
Okay, great. Not in the committee or the whole, I'm sorry. Oh, wait, there it is. Oh, my gosh, I'm so sorry. Right by that.
The public comment?
There is. I apologize. Okay, we'll take a public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address the board either on an agenda or non-agenda item? I'm so sorry.
I have Richard Storm, resident.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Richard Storm. I live at 102 South River Street. Lived there 45-plus years. And my wife and I are very happy in East Dundee. We wouldn't have been here that long. But last Monday, came home, this is not on the agenda, found this little note on my door that the villagers could come and take your property away. And it was based on that study you've done about parks and all potential land kind of thing. And I had disappointed that the village didn't at least make us aware, because I went back and looked at the Depot News, and there was an article in the Depot News, well, it looked like, here, I'll give you the picture. And it was, it mentioned that the property by payers is possibly a park kind of thing. But then there was a little thing that said more. So I clicked on more. On the 20th page, I found my property listed as potential redevelopment area. So all of a sudden, I started thinking, okay, what does that mean? Is it tomorrow, two years, three years? What does that do to our property values? And I just disappointed that the village, I have to find out from, I don't, I'm sure the person will be here the next meeting, whoever handed this out, put it on our door. And just, to me, that's just not the way things should be handled. I mean, and then you throw in that I got to look all the way to page number 20 on the Depot News, like, it's almost like it's hidden. Okay, I don't assume that was the intention. But whatever you decide on this thing, I hope that you, when it comes up with an agenda item to be discussed, I've been at board meetings where they put it the last thing in the night, so everybody's got to sit here, or it gets delayed to the next meeting. I would hope you put it, your decision up to the front of the agenda, because there'll be a whole bunch of people here, okay? And, well, I don't know, I, I, I hope you understand our, my position. I'm only representing my wife and I. I don't know what other neighbors are going to do or anything. But I just, I guess, I'd like you to think if all of a sudden you saw something in the village newsletter that your home was in a redevelopment area, if you would understand, like, whoa, the reason I'm here. So I don't know where this, this came from. I, I would hope the village would have given me something like that.
Well, I can tell you, I mean, it, I, I can assure you there are no plans afoot to acquire anybody's property. That really was just a part of a, a basic study of what could be done along the riverfront. And it, when, when it talks about any land acquisition, in order to be able to encompass all of what could possibly be done with the consultant's plan, it would involve some land acquisition, but there's, there are no efforts right now to do this. I mean, this is just to kind of give us an idea of what we, we can do with the removal of the Carpenter'sville Dam. It is going to actually open up the Fox River for recreational purposes to a great extent, from, from North Algonquin all the way down to St. Charles. And we have, and that has been going on for a number of years, that discussion still hasn't happened. But what we've done was just to kind of get a feel for what we have and what could be done. This is just a what-if.
Okay, I, as a citizen, I would have one request. When you have your discussion, I would like to see you say there will be no redevelopment north of Maiden Lane, north of such and such a place. So any of us selling our house, don't get caught in that thing with a real estate person saying, okay, your house is worth this, but we read this article that East Dundee might be redeveloping this area.
Yeah.
So I mean, so when you do vote, please keep that in mind, that we would like to see that happen. The only reason I'm here, quite frankly, is I called last Monday in the administrative office. I did not get a call back about this until this afternoon, 2:00. I probably wouldn't even be here if someone would have explained to me. But if you don't get called, you start going, is this all being hidden? Is it going to get snuck through?
No, I can assure you that wouldn't be the case. I apologize for the delay in the call. But I can also say comfortably that when the time comes for that potential development along the river, nobody on this board is going to be here. That, I mean, when you talk about slow, you know, mechanization of government and how slowly it works, believe me, I, I'm comfortable to suggest we won't be here at all.
From my perspective, Mid Valley's property, they have to move. You know, the village has acquired that, so you don't know when you're, when you read something like this, okay? I mean, are we next kind of thing? So all I ask is if you decide not to do anything with our area there, please make it official, so.
Absolutely. I mean, I can assure you that, I mean, if in the event that we still, like I say, are here, there will be more than upfront communication with everybody involved.
Okay. I used to, my previous job had a great working relationship with East Dundee, so, you know, I, this caught me as a surprise that I have to find out from.
Yeah, I apologize to that. And I really don't know how that information was, was, you know, disseminated.
Plastic envelope stuck under all our doors.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know if it was really just somebody trying to sound the alarm prematurely, certainly. So I apologize for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Catherine?
Jason Solars from Warner and Truist Monument Company on Water Street.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm going to piggyback off of what Richard was saying a little bit. As you mentioned, I, I run the monument company at 107 Water Street. And that's part of the area that is not included in the future plans. I know that that's part of the plans for down the road. But I just wanted to make you a little bit aware of the history of the company that I represent. Walter and William Hardle started the monument company in East Dundee in 1899. The Hardles were very prominent in the development of East Dundee at the time. In 1909, they purchased the land at 107 Water Street, all the way to Main Street, and moved the business there, which it has stayed to this day. In its 125-year existence in East Dundee, it has been run by only three families, the Hardles, the Warners, and now, for the last 30 years, the Truist family. Fast forward to what we're currently doing, I work closely with Mark Raykow over at the cemetery. Adam pulls some information for me. He took over in, at the end of 2017. From 2018 on, we've helped over 200 families with memorials at the cemetery. Last year alone, that accounted for over 45% of the new memorials that were put into the cemetery. We love being a part of the community here, whether it's welcoming new businesses with the Chamber of Commerce, passing out cookies and hot chocolate at the St. Patrick's Parade, like we did this past weekend, or attending many of the events that are over at the depot over the summer. Speaking of the depot, we were actually commissioned to do the plaque that sits on the corner of that depot. And the mural that was done last year on River Street, there's a nod to the monuments as well. Anytime that we're out meeting with people, we hear, oh, you're in that little blue building on the river. Or I went to school with one of the Warners, and I was over at that office all the time. I have records dating back to the 1950s that were all handwritten. And I have families coming in, and I'm able to pull orders that their parents and their grandparents did, and show them their signatures, let them walk out with it. And they're incredibly grateful to see the type of experience that our, our, we don't really call them customers, our families have when they work with us. I recommend looking at our Google reviews and Facebook reviews, and just see the, what we are contributing to the community. Over the last few years, we've done numerous updates to the property, including landscaping, paving of our lot, adding outdoor lighting, full interior renovations, and are actually currently in the process of having the building exterior painted. We understand the importance of the area and are always looking for ways to improve our part. We are excited for the development that we've heard along the river. Our hopes are just that we'll be included in that future in our current location, maintaining our history and ties to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Oakland, resident?
Hi, I'm Kim Oakland. I live at 2 Johnson Street, and I'm going to go off of what Richard and the other speaker said. First, thank you to the board for acknowledging the concerns that I have and that some of my neighbors have about the riverfront plan, and going along with what Mr. Storm said, that while the plan might not be to remove anyone's home, it's just kind of shocking to see that in a plan itself. So just asking that you consider either revising how that is labeled, or just removing it from the plan altogether. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else would like to adjust the board? No? Saying none. Again, I apologize for the oversight there. So this will take us into our agenda items then. And the gentleman from Flock can come up, or Chief, either one? Okay. Thank you.
Well, first of all, really appreciate you guys taking the time today to learn a little bit more about Flock safety. Flock Safety, we are the leading license plate reading company here in Illinois. I believe there are 282 law enforcement agencies here in Illinois currently utilize Flock, including about a dozen here in Kane County. And basically why law enforcement have started looking at license plate readers, especially, particularly Flock in general, is a couple of reasons. The first reason is they are very effective. So basically, the way these cameras work is that they hang at the side of the roadways, either on an existing pole, or we drop our own DOT-approved black breakway pole in ground. If there's any permits involved, maybe the county or the city or the state, we will go get those permits for you. And then anytime a vehicle passes it, it activates and makes it take a bunch of pictures. Then machine learning is running over the top of it for it to be able to identify what is a vehicle, read the plate, the make, color, and type of vehicle. And then from there, it also runs it against state and federal databases to see if that vehicle is stolen, there's warrants on it, or your PD can create their own custom hot list. And if any of those happen, they'll send off a real-time alert to the PD. Then the PD can decide if they want to try and make a stop on that vehicle or what have you. Then from the investigative side of the system, every capture is stored on CIGS certified Amazon web servers for 30 days. During those 30 days, law enforcement can look at those captures or search for them based on information they have about a crime, and attempt to identify what vehicles were in the area. So you can search by make, color, type of vehicle, as well as bumper stickers, a couple of other things. And then basically use that information to kind of start the leads on their searches. A couple of things to be aware about these, these items. We've worked with civil liberty groups to try and design a, it's called more palatable, LPR system. So the first thing is, when you guys are buying from Flock, is you are not actually buying this camera itself. You buy the data coming out of the camera, and so you decide who else has access to that data. So what other law enforcement agencies have access to it? And Flock is not able to resell that data anyway. So we're not turning your citizens into a second product or anything like that. You guys own that data. The, the second is that we are not running this against any, we are not basically running this against any PPI data. We're not saying that that vehicle is Eric Jour or something like that. We're saying that it's a Black Ford truck with a plate XR437. You guys can go back to, your law enforcement has the ability to go see who owns that vehicle, but that information is not being data-based in any way. And the third item is that every capture is stored for 30 days. After 30 days, if it's not part of an active investigation, that information is purged, and it is gone, gone. So there's, there's no, just because you passed a camera two months ago doesn't mean you're sitting in a database somewhere. The second part about this is that Flock's a fully vertically integrated organization that handles this end-to-end. So we designed this hardware and software ourselves outside of Atlanta. We assemble these cameras ourselves outside Raleigh, North Carolina. I'm the sales rep. I live in the area. I live in Brookfield. I come around the state and try to sell everyone cameras. The techs who install the cameras and do the ongoing maintenance, those are also Flock employees. They will roll out of Bowling Brook, or maybe Madison, I don't know which one's closer. But they'll come out here, they'll survey the land, call 811, dig the holes, put the cameras up. There's ever an issue with a camera, we roll a tech, come out and attempt to fix it. If the camera is busted, we hang a brand-new camera, no cost to the village. So basically, again, you're not buying the cameras, you're buying the data. It's Flock's responsibility to have working cameras in your guys' jurisdiction. So that at a high level is what Flock is bringing to the table here. I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys might have.
So data retention for this is 30 days on your part. Do we have the ability to retain further beyond that? And then what, what kind of storage? I mean, storage generally is cheap, but what I'm wondering is do we have the hardware to store it?
Yes, we do. So part of our Axon agreement, we're able to take a third-party, let's say, video, okay? Let's say that you took a video on your cell phone camera of some type of criminal progress. We can send you a link through our Axon software, where you can upload that video and send it to us and extort your client. So we're already paying for part of that, so that's, that's part of the Axon agreement. So that's where this would come in. We would be able to store it on the cloud without an additional cost. And going back to what he said, anything that wasn't being actively investigated is going to go away after 30 days anyway. This would only be the stuff that we would flag as part of an active investigation and retaining that.
And we would make the decision on whether or not to retain it or, or purge it?
Yeah, a lot of times that, that's based on statute of limitations, too.
So we have a direct integrate, a partnership with Axon. So right from the Flock portal, if they want to, if there is an active investigation they're part of, they can run a search of Flock system, looking for any Black Ford trucks that were on Route 72 between, on this date between these times. They find anything that they want to maintain, they just download it off, put in the case file, it connects directly to evidence.com. And then you guys have for your own storage, whatever your, your own internal rules are about your internal storage.
Is there a way to, and this is kind of silly, might sound a little apparently, is there a way to beat it? The system for, I mean, for instance, if there was debris on a license plate that wouldn't be able to, be able to be recorded or ret, is there resolution capabilities that can enhance what is?
Well, I mean, this, like, if someone blocks their license plate or, like, like, puts something over the top of it, like, it's still going to tell you it's a red Ford truck. But like, like, this camera, basically, whatever you can see with your eye, that's what it's seeing. It also has infrared light for, for nighttime captures, so it can still read, tell you it's a red Ford truck at night, and you still have the image capture of that, and you can still see the vehicle, all that stuff. But it's basically just telling, the best way to think about it is like, you basically have an officer just sitting on Route 72 writing down every license plate, every make, color, model, type of vehicle as it goes by. He just basically has them all up, and if someone is doing an investigation, basically, then call them up. Hey, give me all the red Ford trucks that came by, like, those seven will pop up for them to view. So it's basically whatever is passing it, that's what you're seeing. And then these cameras also connect with the over 3,000 other ones throughout the rest of the state. So like, if there's a, like, a group that's kind of going and hitting a bunch of the, the outer room subdivisions, and there's a bunch of different Cadillac convert, that's for some sort of repeatable crime, you can basically, if your crime looks the same as the crime that happened in West Dundee that looks the same that happened in Huntley, you can put it in, see what vehicles were all in that area at the same time, or at, during those timeframes. So you're connecting in to this larger network that's in the area.
Larger network being other communities? I mean, what happens if you've got a community that isn't part of Flock's security? Would they be able to get any sort of information from us? How do we pass that information on to somebody who wasn't part of your group?
I mean, so I would say we probably have about 85% of the, of the, of the cameras out on the, on the roadways are, are through Flock. This type of technology is very, like, if you go to Pennsylvania, there are no Flock cameras there. But if you go to Illinois, or Missouri, or Indiana, those just, this happens to be the technology that's dominant in that area. Because the network effect is a very important thing here. Now, departments that don't have Flock, they also can act, do searches in there. But like, if there's, I'm trying to think of the closest community that Aurora doesn't have Flock. They have a different vendor, like, or if you search Flock system, the Aurora cameras aren't going to pop up in there. But I, I can't think of anyone in your general vicinity here that isn't on the, Shopper's, I was probably closest. Anything close to Shopper that is on Flock.
Carpentersville, West Dundee, Barrington Hills, all are currently using Flock. You would be able to leverage our system with their.
Okay, great, yeah. Just Castle White or not?
Right.
Yeah, so. And last question I have is, you mentioned civil liberties groups. I mean, is that, I would be concerned about any of that kind of blowback? And it ends up in a liability suit somehow. What sort of measures do you guys offer for, I mean, is there any liability insurance that you cover? To protect, I mean, if they're questioning your methods?
I mean, the, the Supreme Court has weighed in on, on this type of technology, and it basically boils down to there's no, there's no expectation of privacy in a public right of way. So it's basically the exact same concept of, the gas station has a, has a camera that happens to capture the roadway. It's basically the exact same principle. So, and again, we have, we have taken steps of, the retention is only 30 days, so this is in a forever database. Each one of these communities own the data themselves, so Flock doesn't own, like, millions of, of these, these captures. And we are not, and we're, we're, we are not connecting it directly to individuals. Again, so unless that vehicle is on some sort of hot list, or some sort of state or federal watch list, that is not sending out alerts directly to law enforcement. And they can't go in there and search for, like, Jeff, Jeff Lehman. They, they, they can't put in your name, and it'll show you, show that vehicle for you. That's not how, how it works.
Great. So then also too, Chief, between that 30-day period, is that going to add to your guys' workload as far as being able to know whether or not you need to retain something or whether you can delete it?
That's already.
It's already been done and augmented for you?
Axon has.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, we flag it, we give it a retention date. Let's say that this is something that's being actively investigated, so it's going to go beyond the 30-day window, and it's in our cloud. We have retention dates established in there to tell us, even the Axon system will purpose them.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a question. In your contract, you list the total contract amount, $79,450, and that's for a five-year, five-year contract?
Over a five-year.
In that five years, you know, we have, like, for instance, these red light cameras, right? And if you get, if you run a red light, you pay some to the village, and you pay some to the red light camera company. Is there something like that in your fee where people that are, I mean, what, do you have other fees that you collect?
Oh, no.
Besides what's in this contract?
So Flock has taken a very purposeful tactic of not ticketing the public anyway. So we don't do any sort of parking force, we don't do anything that can result in sending a ticket to, to an individual. So there are, there are no, no, there is no ticketing associated with this. There is no additional revenue, these are not designed to be revenue generating devices. These are designed for public safety.
Okay, so, I mean, there are no other fees then?
No.
That we would incur?
Everything, the part of, actually, one of the reasons I think that Flock really exploded across the region was how straightforward a pricing model is. It is basically able to budget, you know, exactly what it's going to cost year in, year out. There's a big snowstorm, and one of your cameras gets some ice in it, and it freezes, it busts it. That's not on you. The Flock will come out and fix that camera. So anything that is defect or act of God, that's, that's Flock, Flock replaces cameras for that.
All right, thank you.
Actually, that brings up a thought for me. Is there any provision for early removal of the equipment prior to the completion of the five-year contract?
So part of, when you look in there, we are basically discounting your IDOT installs as part of doing the five-year agreement. If you were just doing, like, a one-year agreement or anything less than five years, it'd be an additional $20, $1,250 for each one of those locations if you did a shorter one. So basically, is the chief talked, looked at doing a longer one and keeping the, the payment less expensive on, on the front end. But, yeah, we, we will enter into shorter agreements.
So it's more expensive just to kind of dip your toe in the water?
Correct, yeah. So basically, you make, you make a longer commitment, we waive some of it. So there, there are different types of poles that we have to use depending on the jurisdiction that you're in. So like, city roadways, like, if we can put it on an existing pole you guys own, it's $150 to put it on. So I believe we're doing one, one of those. If you have to drop a pole, either a city or a county right of way, Kane County accepts our standard pole. It's $650 for that pole. I've probably seen a lot of black poles with solar panel up there. The poles that IDOT mandates are $1,250. It's just a much more robust pole. It's, it, it can, has to be able to take like a 120 mile-an-hour hit, and like, it's just a much more robust piece of equipment. But that is, we're basically, for the extended contracts, we roll, we basically roll with it.
All right, good, good.
I have some questions. So you said Carpenters, West Dundee, and Barrington Hills. I'll currently have your system. Does Elgin have a system, or are, have they looked at this?
So Elgin is currently going through a license plate re-review process, which is on its third year, I think. Elgin is, is the, is the only city within the, I think it's like the top 40 largest cities in Illinois that does not have an LPR. And that is a conscious choice by the, kind of, the city of Elgin.
Okay. And then the number of locations or cameras that you see that would be installed in the village? And where would those locations be?
So I believe it's in the packet. You guys have two on Route 72, basically, both edges of town coming in. And the idea is that people, stolen vehicles, things like that, coming into town, will ring the police. You have one kind of right out here, shooting down your, kind of make where it comes to a T right over here. Yeah, and it's, that area is tight enough where you can get both directions there. And then two kind of heading out towards the quarry, or what's, what's that?
Two of these are going to be kind of dedicated to the Pollo property, and that's, it's by design, specifically because we get so much theft and burglaries and, and, and whatnot from that property. The idea was to devote two of them, two of the cameras essentially to their property, but to leverage it to also get ingress, egress out of the village.
Right, yeah. So, okay, thanks. And then, you know, one of the things that I really appreciate that you do, Chief, is the biweekly reports of incidents. And so, you know, I see a lot of, you know, we're Fundee, East Dundee Fundee, whatever we're calling ourselves, right? And a lot of it is bar-related issues. Every once in a while, I see, you know, issues where there's a car fleeing and that kind of thing. And about how many incidents a year do you see, would you see the need for a resource like this and a database like this?
Well, here's the thing, and I'm.
And I'm not going to hold you to this specific number.
I'm going to use Flock's root statistics on this, and I don't say root as in that they're not accurate, except that they are. But the statistics say that about 70% of all crime involves a car, whether it was used prior to, during, or after. And I would even bring you back to the incident that we had just a few months back, where some bullets were shooting at the gas station. Unfortunately, one of these properties that were owned by, was East Dundee residents. Part of the issue of us not being able to solve that is not being able to identify the car, the license plate, et cetera. This technology would have done that. This technology would have done that.
Right.
So going back to statistics, I wouldn't be able to give you a hard number right now. I'd do a little bit more research, but just based on the fact that about seventy percent of all crime involves a vehicle, that's why this technology is important to us.
Okay. And then, just like the last question, going back to Elgin and their process and kind of looking at this, you know, I, the first concern I would have would say, you know, this is, you know, government overreach, Big Brother, you know, looking at us. And how do we, how do we, how do you square that with what this, either of you, what this service does?
So first of all, any search or anything that's done in flock, there's a full audit trail. You can audify the individual camera, the network, or the individual user from the police department. And we recommend that a part of your policy is putting in the reason for the search, and then the department auditing off of that. So we consider best practice putting in the case number of whatever the search is, and being able to tie every single search that you're doing back to there was a reason for it. So that would be like as far as what we consider best practice on that front. And then, and this is me, this is not, me as a flock employee, but me as just a person like who interacts with a lot of law enforcement, is that they are very busy just in general, and that they don't have time or want to be trying to track people for reasons that aren't directly tied to like law enforcement. It's just, they're like, this isn't like ICE doesn't have access to this or something like that. Like this is a much more of a localized tool. But just from interacting with all these police departments, I just don't think that they have time, that's kind of what's starting.
We used these a good start when I was in the state. And they actually added several more. And that was one of the concerns that we had for the community. Oh, this is Big Brother, oh, you're tracking me, et cetera, et cetera. I think it's important to be forward-facing with that. And explain what flock does to the community, what it doesn't do. What flock does, for example, what our red light cameras do, for example, they'll tell you who owns that vehicle. It sends them to you, et cetera. Flock doesn't have that capability. It'll send us a plate number for us to figure out who owns that vehicle. We actually have to run it through Lees, or CAG has to, I'm sorry, dispatch has to run it through CAG in order to get the vehicle and owner information. Much different than what our red light cameras.
Right, right.
And that separation is on purpose. Plus, we also, part of what you're getting, you can also set up a forward-facing website on your, on your.
On our URL, yeah.
Yeah, to, that shows exactly who you're sharing your cameras with, how many reads are being done, what you guys do searches for, your policy. I'm not sure, do you pull one up right now if you want to take a look at it? I know Champagne's got a pretty elaborate one, Champagne, Illinois, flock safety. Google that, you'll probably be able to pull it up.
Oh, but that's something that we could model, the kind of information issue.
I mean, we basically have like a template that you guys can put onto it, and it's part of, there's no additional cost for it. It's just part of the service that we offer.
Okay. That's all I have.
Would there be signs near these cameras? I know that red light cameras always say, you're being reported, or there's a camera. Is there any requirements for that?
No. The, we certainly have people who put up signs. So there are, there are a couple of different schools of thought. There are people who really see these as crime, like warning criminals, do not come here. They put up exactly what they're doing. And other, and other communities are more just kind of using them in the background, so to speak. So I mean, I certainly, not necessarily out in this area, much more in higher crime areas. I would say that they have like some blue light on, and things like that. I haven't necessarily seen anyone kind of, you're guessing, demographic and income kind of areas do that. But that's certainly something that we offer.
And you had said, there's no fee to replace if there's like an act of God situation? Or what if there's an act of, an accident, or someone, and shenanigans?
Yeah. So there, yeah, so there is a, if someone come like hits it with the car and takes out the pole, there is a pole replacement fee. It is, it's six hundred and fifty dollars for that pole. And then, we would suggest you go after that person for it. These are pretty far off the roadway. It's not something we see very often, but yeah, like someone whacks a pole, then there's a pole replacement fee.
Got it.
For loved animals, vandal, yeah. Anything done by man, anything act of God, short of the camera, that's on us. But yes, if someone does that, then there is replacement for that pole.
Thank you.
Is there any equipment in the cruisers that needs to be added in order to be able to read or communicate?
This is online, yeah. So any alert being sent out as a text message, an email, we can put right in squad cars or send to dispatch. So however, your team can set up their user roles for who gets the alerts, when they get the alerts, if it goes to their phone, however.
I wonder, could we do both? Because I mean, if you had real-time info, you'd want it on the cruiser, but you'd probably also want it on dispatch, maybe to be able to communicate with another community saying, he's coming your way.
What we would do in this most common place is set up hot lists. And all the hot lists is to say, let's say that we have a stolen vehicle, or for example, if somebody wanted a warrant, the vehicle wanted a warrant, because it's not going to tell you it was a car. He would give us, that would give dispatch an alert, and then dispatch puts this up, gives that out to us. Because we're on the same network as Barrington Hills. They do it all the time, we hear their alerts over squad car all the time, saying, telling you the direction it's going. Make a model of the car and license plate. That's how the chief wants it.
So we'd be talking, what, two on 25, north and south, and then two on 72? And then one over there by the library?
So the locations I was thinking, because it was Main Street and River Street, so downtown. River Street and Barrington.
River Street and Barrington, okay.
Rock Road and, Main Street and River Street being over here to leverage with West Dundee. Because they have one facing one direction, we would have one facing the other. River Street and Barrington Avenue, Rock Road around 72, around 25, around 72. Carpenter'sville also has cameras around 25 that we'll be able to leverage. And then around 68, Penny Road.
Okay, okay.
One of the benefits of you guys kind of coming in a little bit later, so the other downside is that you do have quite a few cameras already at your access. So that there's free sharing between departments, so you don't have to double up cameras.
All right. Okay. Great, great.
And, like, I would like to see this audit that you're talking about, of like having a way that officers can't abuse this to use it as surveillance and tracking people. And can you set alerts for certain vehicles that you just want to be pinged? And turn it into a surveillance tool that's not really allowed?
So again, your law enforcement team can decide who can create a custom hot list. So they decide who has the ability to search, who has the ability to create a custom hot list. Both those things are audible. So like, there are certainly departments that send reports every week to their, every month, or every quarter reporting on how many alerts happen, how many hot lists they have, all those things. The, there is a specific audit trail that we have in our system specifically built for boards. So yeah, I mean, that's certainly, the internal privacy, like at flock in general, like that is a very big point in general. Like, we never want to kind of get caught in that type of situation. Like, that would be just really bad for the business if there was ever something like that were to happen. So there's a lot of engineering work that goes into making sure that everything's kind of all straight and narrow there. And it's all very search, easily searchable, and all that stuff is in there. And there are reports that he can pull and provide to you, they can come out like in an automated fashion, that is all built in there.
Okay, and they can't just delete search, or delete list, or somebody on staff can access or pull these? Like, the police department controls it, is there somebody outside for checks and balances that can also pull audits? Or how does that typically work in a village?
Yeah, so again, you guys, so this is, again, your database, what you're set up with. So you can create different user roles in the system for who the admins are, who X, Y, Z are. Only people who are CGC certified can actually do searches. So like, if you're OT or something like that, they can't like search for a plate or something like that. It's only official law enforcement. But you certainly can set up roles to kind of oversee the system.
Okay. Chief, just really quickly, you gave a couple of examples of where you, or at least one example of where this could have been used in the past. Could you kind of expand on that a little bit, like how you would see this really being used in our town? What are some instances where it would be really helpful for you?
Sure, when I first came to town, or I first thought that this would be really beneficial, I think, was for the Pollo property. Because of all the things that we were getting. One of the important things to establish when you're doing an investigation is to establish a timeline. So one of the things that I've noticed that officers deal with is that sometimes when there's a tractor or trailer reported stolen from Pollo's property, sometimes we don't hear about it for three or four weeks.
Right.
So then, we're way behind the trail, if you will, trying to figure out, did this go missing? Who had access to it?
Okay.
Whereas if we had this camera technology, it's going to give us the plate, oh, they left it this date, this time. That immediately helps us with our time.
Great, okay, okay.
I could actually volunteer something from one of our other communities. Just yesterday, a community about the size of East Dundee, smaller community, about as far away from Chicago as you guys are. And they got a hot list alert that a car that was stolen out of Chicago had passed through, passed by one of the cameras. That alerted the public safety department to basically swarm the area. And they found the car in front of a local drugstore breaking in at the time. Response time was about forty seconds from when they, from when they had entered the village to when units were dispatched.
Okay, interesting, very cool. I think I'd want to see policy proposal along with this. You know, how, what are we going to do to be as forward as we can with the information?
Great. All right, anybody else? I like it, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. So just to recap what our next steps on this are, it sounds like there's general consensus to proceed. So we'll put this on an agenda for approval in the future. And we're still working out cost sharing with the folks that operate the parking, truck parking area.
Yeah.
So hopefully, we can get some reimbursement for some of the costs from that, because that would be helpful.
Okay. Can I just request that when this does come up, that it comes up, like I just, I think I just said, and Chief nodded, with the policy attached to it? Like what we're going to have internal policy for?
I'm going to try and make this entertaining.
I'm going to try and make this entertaining. Just to be respectful of your agenda, do we have a, do we have a hard stop at seven for this?
No.
No.
Okay. All right. So, my name is Stu Weiss, I'm a partner at Alwad Friedman. I work closely with both Kelly and Caitlin. And Kelly asked me to come and speak today, not just about Robert's rules, but in general, the village's rules. And we'll talk a lot about how the rules are very much up to you as the governing board. Over the last few years, I don't think it's any secret that our country's gone through a lot of contentious and difficult public meetings. They've been difficult for staff, they've been difficult for elected officials, and that goes across the whole political spectrum. Trust in institutions has plummeted in general. And this has occurred even as public bodies have tried to become more transparent. Even as you put meetings up online, even as you put more information up on the web, even as people FOIA you relentlessly, and you respond. There's still a feeling that government is doing things outside, or outside the public eye, or doing things that are unclear. And in times of rising in civility and distrust, the niceties of parliamentary procedure can seem really quaint. Seem like something a bunch of dudes in powdered wigs do like in a Jane Austen novel. I don't personally believe that. I believe that the rules, and yes, formalities, increase transparency. They allow people to follow what's going on. They allow your clerk to follow what's going on, which is kind of important. And our attorneys appreciate it, too. I've often said that local government law is the jurisprudence of how we live side by side without killing each other. Rules of procedure are how you sit up on a dais together without killing each other. And so tonight, we're going to go through these, and you can interrupt me with questions really at any time. I know you guys have got a full agenda, but I want to be respectful of responding to what you want to know. So, very quickly, I don't want to go to too much of a romper room level here, but some of this stuff is kind of essential to what we're going to be talking about. The village is governed by Article 3.1 of the municipal code, which means that you are the default form of government for smaller cities and villages in Illinois. It is, and when we talk about Article 3.1, that's basically the chapter that we look at to figure out how your government is structured, how many of them, how many of you are there up on the dais? Who gets to say what, who gets to vote, who doesn't get to vote? You're home ruled by referendum, which means that you have a lot more flexibility than non-home rule communities, and you have a village administrator by ordinance. So when we're talking about the rules of procedure, first we have to say who comprises the board of trustees. Your corporate authorities, your public body is the village's president and six trustees. Means you have a seven-member public body. This is the only math we're going to do tonight, as we're going. The quorum is four, any combination of the trustees and president. A majority of a quorum, three. Now, this is the fun part, we're not going to talk too much about the Open Meetings Act. In fact, Erica implored me not to get too much on the Open Meetings Act tonight, because we do want to actually stay awake. But the, there is a kind of strange disparity in Illinois law, that you need four of y'all to actually do anything substantive. But if three of you meet together, then it's covered by the Open Meetings Act. And what you discuss should, in principle, be discussed in front of the public. And that's, and that number depends on what the denominator is, how big your public body is. Because you are seven, four is a quorum, a majority of that is three. Then the wonderful question, what if a quorum doesn't show up? Well, you can't really do anything except call for, you can call to order, you can call the roll, determine there's not a quorum. And really, the only motions you can take are to adjourn, or to direct staff or the police chief to go find, to go find all the other trustees, and under the mayor's power, wrestle them, and no, don't do that, don't do that. But there isn't much you can do without a quorum. Okay, so the voting requirement. For procedural motions, the denominator is the those present. So if you have a majority of those present, you can call a meeting to order, you can call it to recess, you can adjourn. But any substantive motion, you need the affirmative vote of the majority of those holding office. And assuming that you have a full complement of trustees and a president of seven, you need four to do that. Under the, under Article 3.1, the village president tends not to vote, unless his vote is needed. And so the default is, president doesn't vote, but can vote when needed. And when would the president's vote be needed? When you've got a three to three tie. So basically, his vote wouldn't be needed to block, to break the tie. When you have three trustees voting in favor, but less than three voted against. So it would be a tie, but people didn't show up, somebody abstained, but it's not enough to get it over the line. President can vote. And then, in cases where more than a majority is required, you're probably familiar with these from your packets, when you have to, when you're waiving competitive bidding, when you're vacating a street and you need three fourths. Those are instances when the president can vote. Under 3.1, president has a veto. And the process is, is that if something is adopted by the board, president must announce at the next regular meeting, can't call a special meeting to veto, must call it the next regular meeting. And then, the village board may overrule by a two-thirds majority. Now, this is where the math doesn't really work out, because two-thirds of the trustees is four, which is the same amount to pass. So in, when you have a larger number, when you have a, for instance, a nine-member, nine-member city council, then you would have five to pass, but six to overrule with veto. In this case, doesn't really matter. In this case, doesn't really matter. This is an important one. Trustees, and this is in your code, trustees are expected to vote unless you were excused by the board or you have a personal interest. So abstention under Illinois law and just in general is frowned upon. Your job, in fact, really, the only job that you have is to vote yes or no on things. That is your job as legislators, and so the expectation is that you should be voting unless you have a reason not to. So the actual rules and orders of procedure, while you have them, while you keep track of what's been done and what hasn't, it's a way to address disagreements in an orderly, if not agreeable, fashion. The most important thing to note here, though, is that when we get to the actual rules of procedure, there's not a lot of law on this. As a governing board, especially a home rule community, y'all make the decisions, and you've codified that in your code under Chapter 30, and that's the baseline. We're not going to talk a lot about Robert's Rules tonight because your code already has rules of procedure in it, and you have the freedom to define your own rules of procedure. The Illinois Municipal Code doesn't tell you how to put together an agenda, what order it should be in, says an agenda has to be posted, says it has to include public comment, doesn't say that you have to put new business before old business, or where you have to put public comment, that's up to you. Now, the, one of the goals of rules of procedure is that it should be predictable, not only for the elected officials, but also for members of the public. So that's why, I'm guessing, why in your rules of procedure, you can't change them except with a vote of five. So you can't just have four people changing the rules all the time. You made that a little bit more difficult. To amend your rules of procedure, you need five votes. Now, could somebody amend that ordinance to put it back down to four? Yes, it's the principle of the thing. Okay, so another important thing to remember is that Roberts is not law. I've had, in some communities, people come up at public comment and say, you have violated Robert's Rules of Order. I'm reporting you to the Attorney General. Well, they're going to be wasting a stamp, or at least the time they spend with the email. Roberts Rules is not law. Roberts Rules is a way of conducting ourselves. These rules of procedure are a way of conducting ourselves. It doesn't invalidate the actions that you take if you deviate from that. In fact, if you have four members who will vote at a particular meeting to suspend the rules, to have a more informal discussion, kind of like we're having here at this committee of a whole, you can do that. So really, why would you then need Roberts Rules? It's really when the village's rules are silent, when you've come to that one instance that isn't covered, or when civility has completely broken down, when y'all can't look at each other, you can't let each other talk, that's when you fall back to procedure. So very quickly, we always talk about Roberts Rules. Who was Robert? Robert Henry Martin Robert, a very interesting guy. He was a general in the US Army, and he was head of the Army Corps of Engineer. One of the most important jobs was he actually prepared fortifications of Washington DC during the Civil War. But before that, he had the unfortunate experience of heading up a meeting at a Baptist church in New Bedford, Massachusetts, that became very heated, and he decided that even with the grace of God, people can be very, very uncivil to each other. And so that meeting in New Bedford, which is a whaling town, and kind of a rough crowd, I've got family there, he decided to put together his Rules of Order. And I love this quote, "The object of rules or orders is to assist an assembly to accomplish the work for which it was designed. Where there is no law, there is the least of real liberty." We don't have parameters on how we're going to discuss, how we're going to do the people's business, then how can you have freedom? How can you have progress? And that's really the, I think it's a beautiful sentiment. So basically, how do you, we're going to switch here to, how do you call a meeting? Under your rules and under Roberts, who can call a meeting? The president, who is the chair, or any three trustees. You still need a quorum, and you still need to comply with the Open Meetings Act, you need to post the agenda, you need to have an agenda, and minutes need to be kept. This picture, which I actually created with AI, was based on an anecdote of a community that I'm familiar with, where some trustees rode up, they were on a Sunday motorcycle ride, they rode up on a Saturday, or a Sunday, or, no, it was a Saturday, because they said they were within the 48 hours, and posted a handwritten agenda on the door of the village hall, and they thought that was enough. So now, we have, you have to put it on a website, and please be careful, don't post agendas while you're writing. Okay, running the meeting. Who runs the meeting? The presiding officer. In most cases, that's going to be the village president. And at the beginning of the year, according to your code, there should be appointed an alternate presiding officer. Have you designated an alternate presiding officer?
Most senior trustee usually.
Right, so you've got a, you've got a procedure for that, or just a practice. So in the absence of the village president, that person would run the meeting. It's important to note that they are not the acting president, that actually has a legal impact on that. They still vote as, they should still vote as a trustee, they don't get to veto, they get to vote, but really, their job is to just procedurally run the meeting. The presiding officer's job should be to maintain decorum, recognize speakers, this is one of the most important things, and it's one of the easiest things to let slide when you're having a discussion, and sometimes when it's a healthy discussion, it's easy to let slide. Sometimes when it's an unhealthy discussion, it's very easy to let slide. But the best way to keep order is to recognize people, let them speak, finish, move on to the next one. The presiding officer can also clear the chambers, what Kelly always refers to as standing at ease. I've had to do that one or two times in my career, it's not fun. By the way, this image was not generated by AI. The website is reallybigthings.com. If you want a, if you want a wastebasket in this, that's in the shape of a solo, red solo cup, you can get it at reallybigthings.com, as well as that gavel. All right. Running the meeting, and this is, once again, comes from your rules, trustees must be recognized by the presiding officer, may only speak once until others who wish to speak have been recognized. This is, this is kind of a basic tenet of Roberts Rules, and then it's also in your rules, that the idea is everyone gets a chance to speak before we hear from the same person twice. And in general, like I said, you call on someone, you let them speak, then you move on to the next one. There aren't, there are very few things in Roberts that actually allow you to interrupt a speaker who is speaking. You should have gotten a wonderful little cheat sheet like this, there's a whole column called interrupt, and under interrupt, there are one, two, three, four, five, there are seven, no, six motions you can make where you actually interrupt someone speaking. Most of them are, hey, that trustee is breaking the rules, hey, I don't understand what's going on here, hey, I need to go to the bathroom, or it's way too hot in here. There are many instances under Roberts where you're actually allowed to interrupt someone when they're speaking. But you can also appeal the presiding officer's ruling by a majority vote, and then two trustees can add an item to the agenda, but you can't take final action on it unless it was published. So if you say, in this meeting, we're at the, during the regular meeting, I would really like to discuss, we're talking about the spongy moth, I'd like to talk about, you know, the cousin of the spongy moth, the loofah moth, and, well, that's not on our agenda, you can add that, but you couldn't take any final action on that. I was really reaching to come up with something else.
It was good.
Yeah.
Good job. Can I ask, can I interrupt you?
Yeah.
Since we're talking about that.
Check your cheat sheet.
I know, I'm like, I don't know if I'm allowed to. The third item, I'm a little confused about the, what a presiding officer's ruling.
Yeah, so if a presiding officer made a ruling, and this is, this is where things get kind of technical, when a presiding officer would say, for instance, someone's out of order, and they, or, you know, or, they don't get to speak right now, a member of the community, you don't get to speak right now, and everybody else says, no, we really want to hear from this person, so I'd like to move to overrule the presiding officer.
Okay.
Once again, that type of action really only occurs when things have broken down, because usually, the presiding officer will look around and kind of read the room and say, well, okay, it sounds like there's, there's a consensus here that maybe we want to talk about this a little bit further, maybe we don't want to end debate on this just yet. Order of business, consent agenda, any member can poll without need for a second, and then who else can speak besides the trustees? You have your designated public comment. Otherwise, members of the public or staff should be recognized by the presiding officer. And that doesn't mean that the presiding officer should be able to silence people, it's really keeping the order of things, making sure we know who's talking, and that, for the, simply for the sake of the minutes as well. Yeah.
Okay, public comment.
Yeah.
It can get, that's one of the areas that I find here can get really out of hand really quickly.
Yeah, I'm hearing a can of worms slowly being opened like a hot pot.
Right, okay, so what I'm going to ask you probably isn't a surprise, so, you know, we've been kind of given direct that, that public comment is really all about letting the public speak, taking their concerns to heart, and avoiding a back and forth, because this is not the time or place, it's my understanding, to do that. So for somebody who's really passionate and wants to further discuss, or they're going out of their time, or they want to delve in it deeper to be heard more officially, like what is, is it, do you give that person directive to say, you know, speak with the clerk and the administrator, and we'll see about putting this on, on the agenda at a future meeting? Or what's a good, we need some tips and tricks.
Yeah, well, I'll give you the legal answer, and then I'll give you kind of my, my advice based on my experience of doing this for sixteen, seventeen years now. So legally, you should never treat people differently. You shouldn't give people extra time unless there are some cases, like we have, we have someone in one of our communities who's an archipelactic, and they, under ADA, get extra time to speak. They've never actually nodded off when they're talking, they've never actually had an episode, but under ADA, they're allowed to speak. Otherwise, you should treat everyone equally. And when you do engage in a back and forth, that also, that also cuts into their time. So we don't encourage that, and we do encourage that either you speak with the administrator, or the administrator will refer to a specific staff person. If someone wanted to speak again, or if you had more people and you've gone an hour and a half, there are, there are definitely, have you adopted the rule, our firm's rules of procedure yet for public comment?
No, we're going to talk about that probably at our April meeting.
Great. I don't want to steal Kelly's thunder on that, because she actually contributed a lot to the discussion of those, given her experience working with some very contentious public meetings. But there are great strategies, including if you've gone past a certain time, and you have folks who are sitting here who have been waiting to speak, but you also have petitioners who have come up, businesses, residents, who have items on the agenda who want to get done, you can set reasonable limits, and you can say, we're only going to take public comment for 30 minutes today, or 40 minutes today, and then, if there's any of you who are left, once we're done with our business, we will reopen public comment. There are, there are strategies like that that you can adopt, but have them in your rules so they're predictable and people know what to, what to expect. Okay, just as a child of the 80s, does anyone know who that is? Anyone? Anyone? Okay, it's Kylie Minogue from 1987, with her hit Do the Locomotion, which is a remake of a classic song. And so 37 years later, she's 55, she just put out a hit called Padam Padam, which my daughter says is a complete bop. But I just put that up there, because these slides get really boring if you don't put something interesting in there. So Kylie taught us how to do the locomotion, and we're going to talk about how to make a motion. So whenever you're making a motion, you start with, I move to, and you have your wonderful guide of different options on how to do things. Now, do you have to, are there magic words? This isn't Hogwarts, we don't have to say the exact words in the right language. The question is, does the chair understand what you're saying? Does the rest of the corporate body understand what you're saying? Most substantive motions will require a second to commence debate. If you don't get a second, if you get crickets, then you move on. And there are a few motions, and they are listed in your chart, that do not require a second, and those are pretty rare. We'll, we'll talk about a few of those. But when you're working on a main motion, when you're actually talking about, you know, whether you're going to approve a contract with a vendor-like flock, after you have a second, you can commence debate, and the debate, as I said, should proceed in a manner that the presiding officer calls on someone, they speak when they're done, the presiding officer calls on the next person. The presiding officer has the wonderful privilege of deciding whether they want to speak first, last, or in the middle. Probably shouldn't speak all the time, but you know, but that's, that's the privilege of the presiding officer, is to figure out when do they want to have the first word or the last word. You can also split a motion, and that's the, you know, sometimes you guys are going to have things before you that are more than one decision, that are wrapped up, and you can always say, I'm ready to vote on this, and we've got some people who are okay with this contract, and they're okay with three years, but they're not okay with all of the alternates. And so we split up the motion, we decide we're going to do a three-year contract, but then we're going to have to decide, do we want the alternates? Do we want to add on six extra flock cameras on top of what's in the proposal? Amending, amending or substituting a motion, this is one that is always very tricky. When you have a motion, and I have a client that does this all the time, they always want to amend the motion, you have the, someone says, I'd like to amend this, I'd like to change this component of it, okay? Do you have a second for that? Okay, now we're going to vote on the amendment, and all that does is it changes the motion on the floor. So then you have the motion as amended, which means you've got to vote twice, which drives people crazy. But under the Roberts Rules and under most rules of procedure, when you're amending, just to keep track, you vote on the amendment, and then you vote on the original motion as amended. Ordinance and resolutions, this is under your code, and this is also just basic Illinois municipal law, is that ordinances or resolutions should be in written form before being voted on, so that's, so you all have it in front of you. You have it on your iPads, or if you're like me and you kill trees, you have it before you, you can mark it up, you can argue about the different points of language. The omnibus vote, I believe you guys take your consent agenda probably as an omnibus, that is authorized by law, it's, it's, it is an important tool to get a lot of business done very quickly, and that is established by unanimous consent, so you can just say, yes, we're good with this, and then you do one roll call.
So you don't have to read through the entire consent agenda when we make the motion? Or can we say A through F?
This is, that is a point of debate among most municipal practitioners. You can say A through F, and you can say, this is in our published agenda, we can go through A through F. Many clients will say, that doesn't, you know, the village president or the mayor will say, that doesn't apprise people of what we're actually doing, and they will read the whole thing. And I've actually had mayors on a 26-item-long consent agenda, read about half, and then hand off the rest of the reading to the, like, to the mayor pro town while she went to go take a bathroom break. It's not necessary, it's really just practice in how you decide to do it. As long as your, as long as your agendas have been published, as long as people can see what you're voting on and they understand what's going on, you could just say A through F. In the subsidiary motions, this is one of our firm's particular bugaboos. You always hear the phrase, motion to table. Do any of y'all say that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Every time.
I'm not going to, I'm going to breathe deep, I'm going to find my center. Motion to table is actually not the right thing to take. Motion to table, under Roberts Rules, is something you say when there's an emergency, like the fire alarm being pulled, or you've just got a report in from the police department about an emergency situation, you have to talk about it, and you say, we have to interrupt business now, I'd like to table this. And the reason we don't like motion to table, we prefer motion to postpone, because when you do a motion to postpone, you say when you're going to talk about it again. It could be, I'd like to postpone this to the end of the meeting, I'd like to postpone this to the next regular meeting, I'd like to postpone this until March of next year, and that's an inherent component of the motion to postpone. Motion to table, the problem is, is that then somebody has to take it off of the table, and it's a separate motion, it doesn't, and the clerk doesn't know when to put it on a It doesn't, and the clerk doesn't know when to put it on, where to put on the agenda. The administrator doesn't know what meeting you're gonna talk about it. And to give the attorneys hard palpitations, we don't know for the Open Meetings Act when you're gonna actually consider it. So we don't know when you can take final action on it. That's why we're, this, this is the one thing, usually we're pretty flexible, this is the one thing that Kelly will probably squawk about and that I tend to squawk about.
She corrects us all the time.
Excellent, and I love that you don't ever change, don't change. Just because Kelly's, Kelly deserves you. You can refer a matter to another body. And now, as I understand, you don't have standing committees, this is really the only committee of your, of your board, you don't have like standing committees that, that...
We have one.
We have one.
Yes.
Okay, so yeah, so you can always refer something for further discussion, and committee meetings are a great time to talk about things less formally, and not to be bound by all these rules. Ending debate, calling the question. When you've talked in circles and circles and circles and you're not getting anywhere, someone can, after, you can't interrupt a speaker, but when the last speaker's done or there's a break in the speakers, someone can say, I would like to call the question. I'd like to cut off debate. That requires, now, that requires a two-thirds majority of the public body, so that would require five votes to basically say, we're not making any progress here, let's just vote.
So it's five votes to call the question and end, or is it five votes for the motion?
So it's motion, calling the question, and I believe that requires a second. Let's see here, resource appeal.
Yes.
Yes, okay, that requires, so calling the question requires a second, and then you would have a, you can't debate that, you'd have a roll call vote, and it would have to be five votes to end debate.
Okay.
And then you, then you vote on the motion as it stands. Once again, I use AI to generate things so I don't get in trouble for licensing, and I typed in members of the city council play, on a playground at recess, this is what I came up with. I don't, I don't charge you guys for my, for my dollar credits.
Did you white out the person's hair in the middle with the whiteout?
Look, I, I didn't, I didn't want to spend too many times refining the queries, so this is the second image that it spit out. No, don't look at it too long. There, there lies madness. Okay. So privileged motions, motion to recess, simple majority, that just means we're gonna take a break, and usually you'd want to say how long you're gonna be gone for. Motion to adjourn, cannot be debated or amended, just requires a simple majority. So it takes five votes to, to actually end debate and vote, but if you wanted to pull the fire alarm, throw down a ninja smoke bomb and prove chambers, that only takes a, that only takes a simple majority. Amending the secrets of the agenda, basically moving something up and saying, or, or moving something down, that's a thing that can be done by just a voice vote of the majority present. Motion to suspend the rules, this is when you want to again, once again want to have a more informal discussion, you're, you're not gonna have a lot of need for that, but it is there for you. Point of order, requests for information, these are just like, hey, what's going on here? What, what agenda are we on? I was looking at the Hawks game on my phone, you know, where are we? That's, you can always just make those and no second is required. The motion to reconsider. This, I, I could spend all night on this, and I, and I will do an extended director's cut of this if you really wanted to, on the motion to reconsider, but I think we can cover it in about thirty seconds. This is when you've decided something, and then someone who voted for it, who, the prevailing side learns something, maybe they talked to a constituent, maybe they read something while they're sitting up on the dais, and they say, you know what, I voted the wrong way. And, but it has to be someone on the prevailing side, someone who won the vote. And that could mean that they voted something up or down, but the side that won learned something different and says, I would like to reconsider our action. You can make it at the same or the next regular meeting, and it can only be made, as I said, by someone on the prevailing side. Can't make it a special meeting, so you can't call a special meeting with just four trustees to do it. The motion to reconsider may, need not be seconded. And with, the way it works is, basically you say, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider. That motion to reconsider is put on the next agenda, you, well, you, you make the motion. If it passes, then the item is then put on the next regular agenda to be voted on again. And can you always do this? No, because sometimes you've signed a contract already. Sometimes you've authorized the village administrator to enter into a contract to make an initial payment. At that point, you can't reconsider. Someone has already relied on you, and you can't go back and say, you know, we really don't want to do that, can you give us our seventy-five thousand dollars back? Also, if it's like a zoning matter, you would basically have to start up the public hearing process again. So that's, that's kind of the, that's one of those ones where, talk to Kelly, she'll walk you through it. The motion to go into closed session, this is the last one we're gonna talk about, and I really only want to talk about, I said I wasn't gonna talk about the Open Meetings Act, but in every presentation I do about meetings, I put the last shot from the seminal nineteen seventy-two Francis Ford Coppola movie, The Godfather, because it's my favorite image of a closed meeting. It's where Michael gets in the argument with Kay and then pushes her out and they close it, okay, I'm not gonna touch that. But when you're going to go into closed session, you must state the grounds of why you're going on, why you're going to closed session. It must be grounds that are explicitly authorized under the Open Meetings Act, and you must have a roll call. That is the extent of my presentation for tonight. Thank you for your, thank you for your patience, I got it done in thirty-five minutes, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
We slowed you down with questions.
Thanks, Steve. Okay, that's gonna take us to our third item on there, which is patron scans, scanning and database technology discussion. Chief, just wanna be, George, to roll us through?
And I included the informational packet as part of the agenda item as well. I'll be brief, because I know we're running late, but, but patron scan was brought to President Lionel, myself, and Village Administrator Storely by Dan Hart, who owns D.C. Cabs. Essentially what patron scan does is it is a, a handheld device where when somebody walks into a bar, they have to present their ID. That ID is scanned into the patron scan instrument. That lets the, the institution know that that person's there, and more importantly, on our side of things, if that person causes a problem while they're in that establishment, and for whatever reason they're asked to be, they're asked to leave, that gets flagged inside of the patron scan system. So I'll go back to last weekend, there was a person causing an issue at D.C. Cabs, they walked right over here to Diamond Gems, within five minutes of being there, caused another problem. Well, something like that could have been circumvented had we had patron scan. He would have had to have scanned his ID as he walked into Diamond Gems, Diamond Gems would have seen that he just got kicked out of D.C. Cabs, and they would have not allowed him entry into the establishment. So there's also some, some benefits that are discussed in the packet and the patron scan, patron scan software that is beneficial to the, the bar owner itself, it tracks sales in, in busy times, et cetera, et cetera. My, from, from my law enforcement perspective, my, my interest in this would be able to improve public safety in the downtown area, to make sure that we're, we're tracking the people who are causing problems in our bars and making sure that they're not frequenting our bars and causing problems.
So Chief, would we have a couple of things? If someone were to be asked to leave an establishment and they went into another one, they got scanned, but the guy at the door just looked the other way, and then caused a problem, would the information that, would patron scan be collecting that information, showing that they were indeed scanned at the second location, is it held?
As I understand it, yes, and we're able to access that information as well.
So we would know if somebody was circumventing the system?
Right, right, and then that would go to the Liquor Commission, of course.
Right, right.
And another thing that I, I found really important about this particular software is, is if you guys have been to the bars lately, the, the way, the amount of fake IDs that are getting passed, and how good they are now, my twenty-year law enforcement career, I could look at some of these IDs and have no idea that they're fake. That's how sophisticated they are. From what I understand, they can pretty much order them online, and within a few weeks they'll have a fake ID, and it's actually their picture with their information, maybe as different as the person's, right? Just as an example, Deputy Chief Ritter works New Year's Eve, he's pulled forty fake IDs just out of Bandito's that night alone. So, and to be fair, I looked at all forty of these IDs and they looked like legitimate IDs. It used to be back in the day, you could see a fake ID, and it was very clear that it was fake, that's not the, not the case anymore. So that would be another place where this software, or this device rather, would come in hand.
Because Bandito's uses a phone, is it a phone app?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, they do scan the back of your ID, at least the five K afterwards, they had a line, they're scanning everyone's with the phone. Is that probably a similar technology?
Well, no, because it's not gonna alert them if it's fake, because all the information on that ID is gonna be correct. It's not gonna alert them that, you know, they're under twenty-one.
I think that just alerts them if they've been banned, right? From, from there, I think that's the information or something like that, I heard.
That's used at Bandito's?
Yeah.
Possibly, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Yeah, they scan the barcode on it. I'm not sure if that tells you if it's fake or not, if it can run the barcode.
The fake IDs that we're confiscating wouldn't alert that they're fake. The only way we know they're fake is that we actually run their name via dispatch or via in-car, in-car or computer, and then well, it'll come back, no record on file. Well, that's the first sign. What, the tactic we were using that particular night in the question where the forty fake IDs were taken in, just go up to a table, and if they looked underage, just ask, hey, can I see your ID? Well, a lot of them would say, if they were fake in particular, they would say, well, I don't have it on me, or I, I forgot it in the car. Well, you couldn't, you couldn't get into Bandito's without showing your ID, so that was sign one that you were lying. So we would give them a break and say, hey, you can leave now, or I'm gonna run your name and find out that you're under twenty-one, and then I'll cite you. So they took the other option and gave up their fake ID.
So would there be any way for patron scan to allow an establishment to determine whether or not they wanted to ban somebody right out of the gate? I mean, since the system is gonna connect all of our establishments, let's say, if I go into D.C. Cabs and I'm on Dan's list, he just, you know, I've caused problems there before, whatnot, I am not now, but I have in the past, would patron scan alert them to a past troublemaker?
It, it would alert D.C. Cabs, but if, if they walk down to Bandito's or wherever.
Right, okay, alright. So it's, gives a little bit more latitude for the, each individual establishment if they determine it or allow someone.
If you have a repeat offender, most of the, the bar owners downtown are pretty good about asking them to be permanently trespassed, which is something we do.
Okay.
Is that right?
Oh, no, that's okay. I had two things on this. One is, do you have any statement about the current lawsuit on this? There's an active Illinois lawsuit against this for...
Okay.
So, okay.
Not familiar, no, but I'll look it up.
Okay, please, because that's, I'm not getting into that quagmire.
Yeah.
So the other thing is, what is the proposal before the board? Is it to require this of business owners? Is it, what is the proposal? I'll jump in on this one. So I think this is a place where we want to get feedback from the board, possibly the, the establishments and the broader community, and, and sort of tread lightly on this. I, I don't have, I don't think we implement this tomorrow and it solves all our problems. I think that this is, you know, perhaps one tool of many that we could utilize to make some improvements. I understand the, the way that they find the fake IDs is a sophisticated scan of the front of the driver's license. So from that perspective, I think it's valuable because I think there are issues with underage people patronizing our establishments. But how large is that problem outside of New Year's Eve? You know, I can't give you a scope and magnitude of that, I mean, police could probably win, but is it enough for us to, to warrant spending this money, putting this onus on the bar owners to have to have this? Is that would require them to potentially have extra staffing, and then to discuss whether or not the cost would be borne by them or us? So really, today is just, let's talk about this technology, let's try to understand it, let's try to understand what the advantages are and what the disadvantages are, and then let's circle back to this at some other point and, and decide if we think it's a fit for us or not.
Okay.
So I, I think we could sort of keep going with the discussion with that in mind. Yeah, because I know the, from what I understand of my Google search for the lawsuit, it is, as we discussed with Flock earlier, that they don't collect PPI, this does. And that's what the lawsuit's about, that it, it collects personal information and stores it and tracks it for bar to bar to bar to bar. So that's what I wanna...
And it's accessible to a lot more people.
Right. Like bouncers. So that's the, that's at least what I understood when I checked it. I don't know.
Privacy issue notwithstanding, if I'm an establishment owner, I wanna make sure that the people who are coming in are not a problem, because I'm not going to know, and neither will my people if, if it's really busy, that someone coming in has already been denied access to another location and isn't gonna cause problems of mine. And if he does, and I don't know about it, I'm gonna get hit because I'll be before the Liquor Commission and there's a, there's a ticket, not to mention any other, you know, bigger problems that arise. So I, I would like more information certainly from the establishments, but I would hope that they would look at this as a, as a real benefit to them.
It's also a cost.
Well, it is.
They'll have to do that analysis for their business.
Right, but, you know, I mean, there, there are other options, I think, too, as, as far as being able to deal with the costs, but I'm just saying that, you know, from a, from a participation standpoint, it would seem to me as a, as a bar owner, I would, I would like to have, you know, as much information as possible.
Well, to be fair, it was referred to us by a bar owner, so.
I'm sorry?
It was referred to us by a bar owner.
Correct.
It's used in McKenner.
Dan uses it in McKenner.
Okay, in McKenner, because it doesn't have a hair.
Right, no, in the city of McKenner.
Yeah.
That's why, we, we actually had a meeting with them to, to discuss some of the issues that was going on, and he brought the patron scan software too, as an idea to us.
I guess my question would be, if we're gonna require it, what are we requiring? Are we requiring, requiring that every time a person walks in, they have to have their ID scanned, or are we saying anytime someone wants to buy a drink, they have to have their ID scanned?
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, there's a certain, certain time at night where they can't come in unless they're twenty-one, right? And all, some of the bars, like, I know we have some bars that serve food, right? For example, Cabs serves food, but at a certain point in the night, they can't come in there without showing ID that shows they're over twenty-one, even if they were just going there to eat.
So we could, we could say, after a certain time, you have to use it at your door.
So right now, we're saying, so you gave an instance where it would be required of all of the establishments, restaurants, bars, to have this, but is there an option for people to volunteer to do it, where they have the choice of doing it? And then if there isn't, you know, fifty percent adoption or seventy-five percent adoption, where is that point where, you know, if I'm one lone guy, you know, down here and another guy up, you know, at Bandito's, where is it really worthwhile? Other than finding, I might be answering my own question, other than finding, you know, people that do have the fake IDs and, and making sure that they don't come in?
I guess that's part of the discussion here, right?
Yeah.
Is that, how, how do we implement it and who do we direct that implementation towards, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I believe there's somewhere around thirty liquor license holders, maybe just above thirty liquor license holders in the village. Do we, do we require a package liquor institution? I don't think so, right?
Right, right, yeah, okay.
Do you know why D.C. Cabs hasn't implemented it here yet? Because they, they don't need us to mandate it, they could have done it on their own.
Sure, I don't, I can ask though, sure.
I, my, my poor explanation...
My poor explanation of the legal issue has been discovered. Would you mind explaining a little bit better?
Please do.
Yeah, so, the case that was filed in Cook County against Patron Scan was not necessarily about the reading of the IDs, it was that there is a function that their kiosks have, which I don't know if it's actually required, that can also do a full biometric scan of someone's face to compare it to the photo on the ID. And a bar in Division Street in Chicago was using this, and when you collect biometric data in Illinois, Illinois has the most stringent biometric regulations on the collection and maintenance of biometric data. If any of you got money back from Facebook, and also White Castle got hit by this because they were using biometrics for people to clock in and clock out, Illinois has a law that is, has extremely large penalties for the collection and misuse of biometric data without collection. Just scanning the IDs probably would not violate what's known as BIPA, but it looks like some of their products literally did a full facial recognition and then looked at what was on your, so, that's a little bit distinct and it doesn't call into question whether just scanning the IDs would be okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, that's great.
Yeah, as far as the DC Cabs using it, Erica, to your point, if there were just one establishment using it, they really aren't going to get the impact, I wouldn't think, unless there's a network of them in the area, because it's meant for communication process really from one establishment to another, that's how I really viewed it, so.
It's a public safety thing.
Yeah.
The more, the more the establishment that uses it, the more beneficial it is.
Right, yeah, and actually to Kathleen's point, if you had a seventy-five percent adoption, the way we were discussing it was, if you're one of those twenty-five percent holdouts that doesn't want to adopt this, you know, that's all well and good, but you're running the risk that somebody who has been flagged in other establishments is going to come into yours, cause a problem. If you have no way of knowing that they've been denied access to another location and cause a problem in your establishment, the cost involved with putting Patron Scan in is going to be, is going to come up really quickly when it comes to liquor violations, and so, it would seem like kind of a no-brainer to take part. So, just those are, going to the points that we talked about in that meeting, so.
At least, four hundred dollars a month.
Yeah, well, I thought it was three, but.
Three seventy.
Yeah, okay.
Another four grand to buy the machine. And I had a couple of thoughts, the, like, a lot of these bars are pretty low-staffed, so there'd be one person working the bar, like, they'll be working the bar, people are coming and going, like, corralling each person to make sure they go up to a facial scan video camera and then put their ID in, seems hard. Like, some people are going in and out for, like, smoke breaks too, like, having one or two people, a lot of the bars are on skeleton crews, forcing everyone to get scanned each time and make sure.
No, not scanned, that's illegal, just the ID.
Well, the ones in the packet that we're recommending, are we not recommending the ones that actually scan your face?
I wouldn't, just based upon what the attorney said, I think that's a really bad idea.
The phone app works as well? It seems like they're comparing your face to that and, like.
Well, there's actually, if I read it correctly, and I'm sorry, I'm just a Patron Scan generalist here, we were on a conference call with them, but from what I understand, there's two different types of scanners, right? There's one that just scans an ID, I believe, and there's one that scans the full face. So, and then, we obviously want the one that just scans the ID, and then there's also different tiers of the monthly fee as well, from simple to essential to complete. We clearly don't need the complete, I think our need lands somewhere between the simple and the essential.
As far as costs involved, then I realize there is one. I would welcome a discussion about the Village sharing that cost. We talked actually about that as well, and it's going to be a tool, I think that's going to benefit the Village and the residents of the Village as much as it would the establishment owners, and so, as I say, there's ways that we can work that out, but I think it's certainly a discussion worth having.
I, that is a cost of doing business to me, that is.
Well.
And I have to say, from the products that are in here, from just what I can see, they all have a camera, they all have a biometric reader.
Okay.
All of them have a camera on them.
Yeah.
None of them are just a scanner, at least what's in the packet, what's been presented.
Well, the handheld ones, I don't think.
They have the little handheld things, maybe that's what they use at Bandito's, maybe that's the cell phone thing that they have.
You could just not use the thing, but can you use it with just a phone and not have to buy this four thousand dollar machine?
Right, because it feels like those are, like, connected to the machine. I don't know, I guess I don't have enough information, and these are very expensive and this seems like a.
A lot of concerns.
Weird thing for us to get involved in for the businesses.
Yeah, they're out of California, I did ask them, and they said they would be happy to join via WebEx or, you know.
And who can flag somebody, just a bartender at one bar would say, this person was violent or didn't pay their tab and now it's in the system, and how does that person get their name back out of the system? Say, one joker at one bar doesn't like people of a certain ethnicity, so he just flags them all and is like, uh-huh. But how do they get out of that situation then if this is used for discrimination?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, they could say, whatever, I'll just say they were rude to me. Like, it doesn't seem like there's a built-in way to police and fix that for somebody who is kind of a victim on the other end, where now they can't go into any bar in the whole town, because somebody, the bartender didn't like him, or her, or that person just cheated on my friend and now they're out of all the bars in our town, that kind of thing. You do hear the potential for that at bar, like, I could see that being used that way, but if there's a system in place to petition it and to easily get out of it, but it seems kind of like a black box that.
Well, I mean, at that point, the problem would be that we would have to, you know, we would have to almost administer.
It seems like a mess, yeah, to clean those things up when they do happen.
The way it was explained when we were on the webinar, and I'm not saying this is a good or bad thing, because there was, what I find frustrating is, this locks you into this monopoly. There's other companies that do the same thing, but they don't interoperate, so if Bandito picks Patron Scan and DC Cabs picks some other scan, they don't talk to each other, but they have, they would have to manually update a list and then send it to the other user so that we'd get this sort of like flagged list. But exactly that, like, most of the time, the scenarios that they shared with us were the person was banned for that night, and then, in order to escalate that to a tier where you would be banned for a longer period of time, say, a week, a month, I think the most they did was ninety days.
I think so.
You couldn't get banned for like forever, and then there had to be some kind of mechanism for the person to appeal, and I'm not exactly certain how that worked, but the most common scenario was you were blocked for the rest of the night. And, but yeah, there would have to be some kind of way for somebody to say, hey, I was unfairly targeted, or whatever.
And it's a good point you raise, if there are people who are going to apply, you know, personal aspects to the use of the product, I don't know, really, there's a whole lot that you can do about that right now, maybe Patron Scan has figured that out, the technology's constantly changing, that sort of thing, however, it would certainly be in the establishment's best interest not to allow that. So, in the event that, and I think that information would eventually make its way to the owner of the establishment, and if there was anybody who was playing games trying to circumvent the system or use it for a purpose other than what it is, you know, risk in losing your job if nothing else, you know, so, because as you say, it's going to be in the best interest of the business owner to make sure that it's being used correctly, so, but it is a good point.
I think more research.
Yeah, and talking to more bar owners.
Yeah.
If there's very limited interest, then, I mean, unless we just force them to do it, I don't, and I don't really have an appetite for that, especially with the legal issues going on with this particular company, I don't, I need more, I need a lot more.
Yeah, and is there a tool that is like a subscription that the Village could get and let the bar owners log into that with their phones, scan IDs, and have the cost shared across all instead of four hundred dollars a month at every establishment? Some of them maybe aren't issues with fake IDs and some are known as the bar you want to go to when you're underage and that's the place to get into. Sounds like there's maybe a few that are targeted by these groups to go get drinks and a few, and some that aren't. So, is it something that, when we see there's a problem with underage people are going to certain bars, that that's something that is maybe more focused on those bars that have the number of people going to them instead of every bar? Because I'd hate to put too much of a burden on one bar that can't afford it, doesn't have the staff to police it, and just goes out of business because they can't keep up with this even though it wasn't a problem at their bar. So, maybe it's something that is forced on certain bars that do have those issues as opposed to everybody has to do this mega solution for a small bar that doesn't have that problem at their bar.
Yeah, I think it's worthwhile to discuss, the thing is, Dick, we have to remember is that I think the effectiveness of the system itself begins to dilute with the more who choose not to take part. If you get it all the way down, as we say, you know, just Bandito's or just DC Cabs using it, it's really going to come to no effect, because there's no one to communicate with other than them. So, really, what, you know, the tool has no value at that point unless everybody's taking part, so. I'm hoping that if we start to talk to our establishment owners, that their issue is one of cost, rather than privacy or, you know, other issues like that, because if we can figure out a way to make sure that that won't be a problem, then cost would be the only, the only issue, I would think.
I mean, with thirty bars, that would be a pretty big deal for us.
Well, we, it's a huge deal for us. You're right, it is, but at the same time, you have to ask yourself, do we want to continue to add to the police department and the pension issues that we have? And so, you're right, when you say.
The pension issues are separate.
No, what I'm saying is that if we have to continue to add manpower to police these issues, if this would help out and alleviate some of the pressures on the police department, it could be in the long run a savings, and so, we need to at least explore for that.
I think, I think that's, okay, interesting. Yeah, I have to say, with, this is not the device for me, like, with the lawsuit that they're going on through and all that, it doesn't mean that there isn't something out there that we could explore, but Patron Scan has too many issues in this state right now for us to, as a village, insist on its adoption.
Is Patron Scan right now, just have the one pending lawsuit in Illinois?
Just one, just the one.
Okay.
I would have to look, and I would say that the Illinois General Assembly is looking at revisiting the biometric act, but that's, you know, whether something is certainty in Springfield, you know, we can all debate on the odds of that, so.
Well, I would, you know, I appreciate the concern, but I wouldn't want to just dismiss them out of hand simply because of one pending lawsuit, we don't know where that's going to end up, so, we'll keep that in mind as well.
I really appreciate Dan trying to bring a solution forward, I think that's wonderful.
Yeah, I mean, it's a really cool.
I think that's a good dialogue.
It's a solution.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be the solution.
Yeah, it's not just a complaint, he came with something, and so, I think that's helpful, so it's a good place to start.
And it would be helpful to know what other communities are using, like, is this being used at most of the suburbs, or is there a different one that's very popular?
I know it's being used in McKenner, and I know that it's going to the Board in Woodstock, that's all I know, I can tell you for sure.
Okay, thank you.
And then also too, with Patron Scan, if you have a community that's using it, it could talk to other communities as well, so, that was one of the other features. So, if you have a, like, Flock Security, for instance, if they've got the entire state, every community in is using that same system, it certainly makes, you know, sharing information easier, so, so there's that too.
Chief Frank, hands raised, do you have some other information?
Chief, you might want to check, we've got one in Body.
Okay.
I don't know what system, but after we got tagged, not last summer, but the summer before last for the underage drinker, we installed a, some type of a software, I don't know exactly what, but we installed some type of a software that.
At the golf course?
At BodyW Golf Course, yeah.
Cool, thanks Frank.
Great. Yeah, whether it be Patron Scan or not, I just, I think it's certainly a cool idea, any additional help that we can use technology-wise to make our job easier and safer for the community, I think, worthwhile.
Yeah, buzzword in law enforcement right now is leveraging artificial intelligence as a force multiplier, so.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. We don't want the underage drinkers, so.
Yeah.
We do want to find a solution, we're just kind of seeing ways that it could be scammed to make sure we pick the right one.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, that'll take us to our last item on the agenda, this one is the liquor tax discussion, so, Erica, if you want to run us through this one, we've had a couple of discussions on this now.
Not with the whole world?
No. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
So.
Sure, so, we've talked about a couple of ways to fund the parking garage without putting that onus on the residents, and a couple ideas have been kicked around, and I continue to look for more grant opportunities, we just submitted for another one on Friday, but, you know, the cost of the garage is still significant and we're still looking for other ways to support that without making it be part of the residents. So, we've looked at a food and beverage tax, which West Dundee has, we looked at a liquor tax, which some communities have, but not all, and then we've looked at our BDD tax. So, currently, our BDD tax is at point seven five, state law allows it to go up to one percent, so there's a quarter of a percent there that we're not taking, that we certainly could. West Dundee is at one percent in their BDD, and in addition to that one percent BDD, they also have the food and beverage tax. Interestingly, they've had that for about ten years, and they do that, and they get about four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars a year from that, and that's village-wide, so for all of their restaurants and bars.
Comparatively, do you know how much they get from their BDD tax of one percent?
So, their BDD, he did tell me that, their BDD is pretty small, doesn't cover a large area, it only covers a small portion of the downtown, he said it was about eighty thousand.
And ours is like four hundred and fifty thousand?
Ours is like four hundred and fifty thousand, yeah. But if they applied that BDD to their larger area that actually had bars and restaurants in it, it would significantly outpace ours, but.
So, simple math, if we've got three-quarters of a point for the BDD tax and it's generating about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, obviously each quarter point is about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if we're maxed out at one percent, it's really not going to have quite the effect we would need, but one other aspect of the idea behind the liquor tax that I had that you and I have had discussion on was, each year, we're about four hundred thousand dollars a year short on our contribution to the police pension. So, again, simple math, if we're bringing in four hundred and fifty thousand on three-quarters of a point on the BDD, roughly half of the money that's coming in for that tax is from liquor, so let's say two hundred and twenty-five thousand roughly is coming in on three-quarters of a point. If we were to go to three percent, just for simple math, we're talking about six hundred thousand dollars coming in on just liquor. Along with any monies that we could take off the BDD right now, we could certainly use it to fund the DEC, but we could also use a portion of it to make up for the shortfall in the police pension, and so that's something that I really would like to see us, you know, consider as well. You know, each year, a lot of our community men tell us we're four hundred, four hundred and fifty thousand a year short, where's it going to come from? It just keeps piling up and it keeps backing up, and we've only got, you know, until the state says otherwise, till twenty. till 2040 to get there to the 90% level. The numbers just aren't there. At the current rate that we're putting in, you know, it's one step forward, two steps back. So I think that if, if we were to generate an amount of tax through liquor sales alone, we could certainly put some of that towards the pension and ease up that pressure on us as well. And if, you know, a portion of it then could be used for the debt structure on the deck, you know, so much the better. But there are a number of communities out there that have this. We took a look and most of them are in the 5% to 6% range, which I think is kind of high. Schaumburg has one. And it's, they're crazy high.
I think on our agenda, Schaumburg doesn't have one.
So 2% food and beverage tax?
I understand it has 6%. They're the only ones that have one, according to
I thought Schaumburg, I'm sorry.
That is, it's got 6% of consumption.
Schaumburg does have a food and beverage tax. It's 2%.
A 2, yeah. Okay, and their, their sales is already around 10 and a half, 11, so. But regardless, it's, it's something to consider. The other thing that, I'm not trying to stump for it or anything. I just want to, you know, let you have an easy way to consider this. At a $5 glass of beer with a 3% tax is going to be 15 cents. So, again, if we end up, and we're probably going to have to add two new police officers to the force, we're going to have to figure out a way to, to pay for this. And I know it's going to be added pressure on our establishments and I really don't want to do that. I'm not, you know, a tax crazy individual. I, I really don't want to have to go that way. But we also have some realities that we need to face and those are the costs behind those services. And so if we don't plan for it now, we're going to have to plan for it down the road or come up with an answer which is going to be difficult. But I think this is relatively painless.
Can I ask some questions?
Sure.
The funds that we collect in the BDD, do they have to be spent within the BDD?
They do.
Yes. Okay, thanks Erica. If you, Jeff, if you don't, if you believe that increasing this should not pay for the parking garage, what is your proposal to pay for the parking garage?
Well, I don't, I don't say that it shouldn't. I, I think that it should share in it. If we're, depending on the, the level of the tax that we were to implement, it doesn't all have to go for the deck. We've talked about that so far, that, you know, like I say, simple math, a 2% to 3% liquor tax based on what we're bringing in through the BDD, we can, it's, it's fair to say it would generate about $600,000. If we were to just take half of the money that's coming in from the BDD, take the other half to spend on beautification efforts and, and facade improvement, that kind of thing, which we use right now for that, it would still leave us with about $200,000. If a 3% tax came in and generated another 6 or perhaps 7, well, that could give us anywhere from 800 to $900,000 a year coming in. We could have the debt paid off on the deck in about five, six years. However, what I'm saying is that we could cut into that, lengthen that payment structure and start off, you know, putting some on the police pension as well. So 50/50 kind of thing. But I wouldn't want to just put all of it on one and all of it on, you know, and disregard it another. Because if we do end up putting in the debt and borrowing the money that we, we need to do that, yeah, we're looking at about $4, $4.5 million to, to go out on the street for you. So we're going to have to figure out a way to how to pay that back. I'm hoping that by growing the availability of parking, it will grow the number of patrons that we can service in the, in the town and therefore, sales go up and, you know, all boats rise. But apart from that, you know, I think what we could do is, is pay a portion of it towards the deck and
Okay. Erica, there, there's a summary chart with the BDD tax, home rule sales tax. What's the regional transportation authority?
So that is PACE, Metro, all of the
Public transport.
Public transit.
Okay. And then the home rule sales tax and BDD, would it be possible to add those into the comparative chart that we have for the municipalities? So we can see how those compare as well?
Sure.
Thank you. Because I think that that would help me kind of see
Right.
across where, you know, if they're, if somebody's at 2% for food and beverage tax, but they have no home rule sales tax, they have a different sale, like, I just want to see apples to apples across all of this stuff and see where we fall. Total tax?
Plus you like spreadsheets.
I love my spreadsheets, so.
Yeah, I was wanting to see a total number as well for
Yeah.
our town versus others. That's what's going to affect people when they're shopping. If we're like 12% or 8%,
Yeah, right.
I'd like to be in range of the others and not be the expensive suburb where people don't want to go because taxes are so much higher than
Yeah.
all the others.
So what they're, and so that would also include their total overall. That would include everything.
Yeah, with the BDD, like focusing on the place the establishment is where the food and beverages are.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Interestingly, if you go to Old Orchard, they have
Oh, yeah, and county.
about 15%.
Yeah.
Yeah, all, all the taxes, all the things.
Can you remind me what it is our 2% homeroom sales tax brings in over here?
Do you know that, Brandis?
About 1% or 2% probably, about 3 million.
So here's a 3 million?
About 3 million.
Would it not be more lucrative for the village to raise that by even a quarter percent?
Well, we could.
Would it bring in more than a whole percent of one of the other ones?
Yes, that would certainly
And it would
generate more.
And it would actually raise the actual tax on the goods less.
So the rationale that some communities use for increasing, creating a food and beverage tax versus increasing their home rule sales tax is that food and beverage is a, is a luxury item in, in some households. And you can choose if you want to go out and have dinner out and have a beverage, whether it's a soda or whether it's an alcoholic beverage. But if you're just buying clothing, what have you, that is, you know, you have less choice.
Could be basic needs.
Right. So the, this home rule sales tax tends to not always be increased, even though it could and would generate more.
Okay.
It's a complicated
Sure.
Yeah.
No, it is. Because you're, you're increasing the tax on all items, not just on the specific ones. Also too, you know, we, I think we need to, you know, just realize that for our downtown, the majority of the, of the activity, if you will, is alcohol. It just, it's always been that way for East Dundee and it's that way now. What we're talking about doing is, is providing more parking. That's a cost to support specifically the downtown area. And the need for added police force is directly reflected in the activity and the amount of business that we do in the downtown for alcohol-related issues and so forth. And so I don't think it's really out of hand, if you will, that we would look to those establishments to help out with that. So I think it's certainly worthwhile to discuss. If we get more information, we can have another discussion about it.
Yeah.
And if this is a tax to help fund the parking garage and these are for the businesses, would it be helpful to actually ask or put some feelers out to see if businesses are in favor of this, raising their sales taxes in order to provide them a parking garage? Or if they're not and they feel like that would shut down some of their businesses, looking at other areas to find it, like just charging at the parking garage for people who are actually using it. Switching to that fee structure is something to explore. Because there, I feel like there is a few struggling bars or bars that I know that things are really tight. So adding these taxes and if less people come to our town because the taxes just went up, then it could have a detrimental effect on them.
But alternatively too, though, I don't think, the tax isn't, isn't on the bar itself. It's on the patrons and what they purchase from the bar.
Right.
Patrons are going to be paying for
Right. But they might not go if they feel like now their taxes are super high.
Right.
I do hear from some residents already that, don't you dare raise taxes on, like it costs so much to get a dinner in our town now. Like, people are complaining, residents and bar owners, so giving some weight to that and saying, are there other options than just raising the taxes?
I'd be willing to hear what the other options are. And that's why I say I don't, I'm not in favor of a food and liquor tax. I'm not, I wouldn't be in favor of, of increasing the food end of it because that, that is where I think our restaurants have more of a challenge as far as sales. But the liquor itself would also be on packaged goods. So we have a couple liquor stores. We have five or six gas stations that sell liquor. So it would be on that as well, so.
And for packaged goods, would that affect like Black and Gray Brewing's packaging that is off-site? Like, there would be a huge tax on everything they produce and sell at other, other venues?
No, I don't know. I don't know if we have that far of reach.
Anything sold wholesale is not subject to the tax.
Okay.
So buying and selling for inventory purposes would it be taxed? But sort of like, kind of want to move the discussion along because I know we have a long agenda coming up. But big picture takeaway from like compiling this information, there is some room here to do some things. We don't necessarily have to do those now. We could, you know, two years from now, five years from now. What's good to know is that we have options that can be implemented that wouldn't put us too far out of sort of the, the line of what other communities are doing. So that's comforting because, you know, what, West Dundee, when they implemented their food and beverage tax, it was because of budget pressure. And if you go on the website, they have their letter that they sent out in 2014 when things were not in a good place and the mall had significant revenue decline. They're like, this is why we're doing this. We have, you know, these kind of issues and our revenue is no longer where it used to be. So, you know, that was a good option that they had, a tool that they had, that they could use. And for us, Kathleen, that's for a, a chart of our overall debt structure and how it's decreased over time. And I'm going to provide that also when I provide this new chart with all the, the total sales tax so that you can take all of that information together to sort of absorb it and decide if this is right for us now, if this is right for us next year. Or, you know, do we want to keep this in our back pocket? Because down the road, we may need it. I do think there's room now for something small, you know, whatever that, whatever that may be. But I also think that there's room for more. And it, it might not be today. It might be in a few years. It might be in another five years. You know, I'm, I'm a big proponent of paying for the parking, for the parking garage by parking in the garage and paying to park. If you want the convenience, pay to park. But we can't do that for the first five years and that's just a reality. But that's only five years and that, that'll go fast. So that's also a tool we have in our back pocket down the road. So I'm, I'm encouraged to have this conversation and to keep it continuing and then for us to, you know, ultimately come to the confluence of a decision to do something or nothing or keep, keep, keep thinking about options. But overall, encouraged by A, the reduction of our overall debt. Very good. And then B, we're good fiscal position. So we can do things like contemplate building this garage and not worry about how we're going to fund it and we can borrow. And then, you know, just trying to narrow in on how we're going to fund it and make sure that we feel good about the way we're going to fund it and that we feel that the money to support it over time is there. So all good things.
Yeah, I was, I was really surprised to find out that we don't have that.
Liquor tax?
Yeah. The food and beverage and the, and the packaged liquor tax. Because that's kind of, that's kind of something that I guess I don't buy liquor in the village. I don't know.
No, I don't either.
I'm like Woodman's, you know, but
Yeah, it's, I was surprised as well, considering how much liquor we end up selling in this town.
I actually did do a field trip to a liquor store in the village to buy some to, to make sure that they were doing the sales tax appropriately. And they were.
Yay.
It was fair to use 9.75%.
I'll for research. I will also do that research.
Yes. Does anybody else have any comments, questions on any of the items? No? I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Trustee Mahoney?
Yeah, here.
Yes. Trustee Coonsey?
Yes.
Trustee Britton?
Yes.
Trustee Saviano?
Yes.
Trustee Triber?
Yes.
Trustee Sard?
Yes.
And President Line?